A diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll? Dave Abdulla?
Here.
Thomas Berry?
Here.
Robert Coniston?
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Here.
Margaret Horvath?
Here.
Joseph Kaczynski?
Here.
Ray Muscat?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton?
I move to approve the Agenda Order of Business, May 10, 2016, regular meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council, as presented.
Is there support?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the April 26, 2016, meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move that the council approve the minutes of the April 26, 2016, City of Dearborn Heights Council Meeting, as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 5A, is the 2016-2017 Corporate Fund Budget. Mr. Chair. Councilman Muscat.
I make a motion to open a 2016-217 public hearing on the corporate fund budget.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion? Any comments from the public? Mr. Clerk, would you read the notice for the meeting?
Notice of Public Hearing, 2016-2017 Corporate Fund Budget, City of Dearborn Heights. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 10, 2016, at 8:00 PM in the council chambers, located at 6045 Fenton, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, for the purpose of hearing objections, if any, to the proposed budget for the City of Dearborn Heights for the fiscal year 2016-2017. The property tax miller rate proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget will be a subject of this hearing. A copy of the budget will be available for inspection at the Office of the City Clerk, 6045 Fenton, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. This notice will be posted on the Internet at www.cidearborn-heights.us, after approval and by direction of the city council, under and by virtue of the city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Any questions or comments from anyone, any members of the public? Any comments or questions? Motion to close the...
So move?
Close.
Moved by Councilwoman Horvath, supported by Councilman Berry. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor of the motion to close the public hearing, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is item 6, Fund Transfers and Current Claims. Mr. Chair. Councilman Berry.
Move City Council approve Fund Transfer 6A and Current Claims 6-1 through 622.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I've got two questions. One, well, one's an actual comment. I want to thank Mr. Zimmer for line item 13, to get that printed out instead of handwritten. I thank you very kindly. It's a lot easier to negotiate. But I got questions on line 19 and 20. And I don't know if I'm missing it, but we're getting these bills, I guess you can call them. But where are the locations that they're given that we're being charged for? I don't think the locations are given on the...
You got project numbers associated to them.
Right. So I don't know where they're at.
Okay, the street repair, which is number... That would be Pass Avenue?
Pardon me?
Pass Avenue and Hazelton.
19 is Hazelton?
Same one.
Okay.
And then the 2015 Water Main, that would be Water Main that was on Silvery Lane, Powers, and Williams.
Now, they're not on this sheet, am I correct, that I have here? They're not, the location isn't...
No, they're not.
Can we get them put on so we...
We can put them...
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilman? Were you done, Ray?
Are you done?
Yes, I'm done. Thank you.
Councilman Abdulla?
Mark, were you next?
Yeah, go ahead.
You first. Go ahead. All right. I had a question on 6A. This would be the fund transfer of $65,000. And this is for the additional legal council services. The question I had, $65,000 is a pretty substantial amount to have additional legal services. I'm just curious as to what that was used for and why was that not projected initially? Was there a major lawsuit that we didn't know about? What was that from?
The more things that the council and get referred, that's what we incur. I don't know that there's anything specific to cause, but we've just had more work that's been sent over to us. So we do the work as it comes over to us. So we don't end up actually setting the budget, if you've noticed. And it's based on what things come to us and what's expected. And if a lawsuit comes in, we have to end up dealing with it. So I think there might have been more work in terms of some of the tax stuff. But that's something that Mark Roberts would be able to address a little bit better because his firm ends up handling that. Other than that, we've just been busier and been expected to do more.
Okay. And then the second question is on 614. The question I had... This is one from the general fund, and we're paying out to Oakland County. I was just curious as to why with Oakland County? What is it?
They operate a clemish system. Well, the chief can talk better than I.
The clemish system is our report writing system. And most cities are connected to Oakland County, the clemish.
Okay.
So we pay three or four, I think it's four payments a year. We're up here almost 70,000 a year to have their computer access. All the tires, the computers are off.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other... Councilman Horvath?
Yes. Actually, I had a question on the same issue. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, but we don't even have a line item for corporate council in our budget. Now, like, are you saying that when we ask Gary to read something or upgrade something or whatever, it's charged to us? Then we gotta put money in the account because we have nothing in our current budget that says council services to the attorney.
Well, we all charge, it's a separate, like, there's a separate department for Corporation Council. What number?
Right.
210. But if I ask him to do something or you ask, it all comes through the same account. And then the other thing that there's, like, you'll see two bills. One is from Gary and then one is from the other legal firm.
Right.
And they have been dealing with all the tax tribunal cases, or almost all of them, not all of them, but the more meaningful ones. And so there'll be a spike periodically on certain cases.
Well, shouldn't, if it's coming, if we're making a fund transfer into the council services, shouldn't we have a budget item in our budget?
Yes, but it's not city council services, it's Corporation Council Services.
He used the wrong word instead of council. I think the clarification is that the appropriate word in the titling should have been council, Corporation Council, C-O-U-N-S-E-L, opposed to City Council. So...
Well, they misspelled council. This is the council, like a city council versus C-O-U-N-S-E-L. So they used the wrong spelling.
Exactly.
And that's adding to this confusion.
While I have the floor, it might be advisable to suggest, as you watch the progress in the budgetary period, you will recognize soon enough that there are going to be some fund transfers required by virtue of the balances that are held at the point of a given time in that budget. And this probably wouldn't come as a surprise if you hindsight those reports that Controller McCary puts in our hands.
Anything else? Do we have a motion for...
I have a motion on the table.
You have a motion on the table, yes.
Removed and supported. Any further discussion?
Councilman Berry proposed a motion. I support it.
Any further discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, from Tifa Chairman, John Kellet, proposed 2016-2017 Tifa Budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton?
I move to approve the proposed 2016 Tax Increment Finance Authority Budget, as attached to item 9A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, from Treasurer Riley, Interfund Loans.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move, council concur with Treasurer Riley's request to authorize an interfund loan in the amount of $3 million, interest rate at .55% per annum, as defined in a letter dated May 2 of 2016, all under the category of 9B, and the signature of Treasurer Riley.
Support? Support by Councilman Berry. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Just want the public to be aware that these loan is going to be paid off by September, you said? And it's... And there's a good bet that it's not even going to be nowhere near that amount. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, from Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, purchase of plotter-cutter.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton?
I move to concur with Department's Public Service Administrator Director Zimmer's request to approve the purchase of one graphic, excuse me, GrafTech plotter-cutter. The lowest bid is $4,969.22 from Wentzco Sign Company. Payment upon receipt, as outlined in 9C.
Second.
Second by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of Proposed Ordinance 816-2 regarding adoption of the Michigan Residential Code, 2015.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move council consider... 11A, dealing with a ordinance, it's 1602, ordinance 1602, be considered read for the first time. And also to refer 11A to a study session for additional debate and discussion for the opportunity to make the appropriate decisions at a future point.
Support? Support. Councilman Berry, any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is business license renewals for Denny's Gin Mill, Fairlane Eagles, and First Mutual Auto.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move council approve all of the business licenses under the category of 13A, as presented to and on the agenda.
Support by Councilman Berry. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Abdulla?
On a couple of these, Mr. Clerk, they didn't have, there's a check on it that you're supposed to, it's supposed to be checked off. At the present time, you are current on both personal property taxes and water, therefore your license is renewable. On a couple of them, on Denny's Gin Mill and on the other one, which is First Mutual Auto, they were not checked off. Do you know what the status is on those two?
Yeah, these are mailed out, and they're mailed out with the checks there at the present time. You owe or you don't owe. Sometimes they don't return the renewal forms. These are just extra renewal forms we printed. So you understand what I'm saying? We don't get the original.
Well, what I'm asking is...
Let me, let me...
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. We don't put it on the agenda unless everything is paid up.
So the answer is they are both up to date even though it's not checked off?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry?
I know that we've discussed it several times, but I'd really like to ask the chair and the mayor to set a date when we can take a look at the overall business license fees. I think a lot of these fees that we charge some of these businesses is ridiculous. Music box. Come on. I'd really like to take a look at a different structure here. It just doesn't seem fair.
Yeah, we'll get a study session set up with the clerk and with, we talked about this before about merging them into one fee.
Yeah, in fact, it's ironic that you should bring it up today. The city clerk and I, we met for a good hour today talking about this item. And he's, the city clerk has some real good recommendations. So I think, although he's swamped with elections this year, but if we can fit in around his schedule, I think we can make the process much better. And both of us are committed to doing it.
We'll get that set up. Mr. Chair. Councilman Muscat?
Along the lines of businesses licenses, what about businesses that are operating without licenses? What is, what do we do about that? There are known businesses that are operating without licenses. Is there a fee or a fine for that, or how do we go about taking a ticket in?
This has been an ongoing problem, Councilman, since I've been here. In fact, this Monday, I completed driving around through the entire city, going block by block, address by address, seeing what businesses are there, what businesses are not there anymore. Businesses come and go. The clerk's office is never apprised of any of the businesses coming and going. So this is what we have to do. On a monthly basis, we send out anywhere from 50 to 90 of these renewals. On a monthly basis, 25% of the people do not renew their licenses. At that point, we give them a 10-day grace period. We send them a letter saying you are operating without a license. And the letter also states, if they owe money, you may owe money. And we give that as letters to the ordinance department. And then I assume that the ordinance department checks after the waiting period. And if these businesses do not have licenses, do not get them, they issue some type of violation.
Do we know what that violation is?
I don't think our ordinance director is here today. But you also have to remember that it's been determined some businesses do not require licenses. For instance, attorneys, CPAs...
And I understand that.
Are excluded. I don't know how many of those are. But my suggestion would be that when we sit down to talk about the fees and everything, that we also talk about enforcement and a penalty schedule at the same time.
Because I'm like Mr. Councilman Berry here. The fees of the business licenses, you know, they vary from one thing to another. But the problem that I have is there's businesses out there that are doing it the right way. And the ones out there aren't doing it. It's like a penalty to the ones that are doing it properly.
If I can, if I can follow up, please. First of all, every business that has a commercial storefront in the city has to have some type of license or a registration. If they are a doctor's office, if they are a beauty salon that is licensed by the state, we register them. So each and every business should have some type of license. We spend an enormous amount of time. The first of the month, my staff checks every water bill. And as you commented before, we put it on, Councilman Abdulla, we put it on the thing. We send the personal property tax to John. John fills that in. We still have probably 100 and some businesses that, we have businesses that have never been licensed since I've been here, to be perfectly honest. And we have probably over 100 businesses right now that aren't licensed or delinquent or they come in and I tell them, you owe this much in water, and they walk out the door. So we, I don't have an answer, but...
Mr. Chair. Councilman Berry?
Yeah, I know that that's an ongoing problem. This might be rather lengthy, and before anybody interrupts me, allow me to at least finish my point here. You're right. Everybody in the city should, everybody that has a business in the city should be registered. Now, I know that this business license/registration ordinance we put together years ago is only as good as the people that apply it. And that is a working relationship between the clerk's office, the water department, the treasurer's department, the fire department. In order for this to work right, these departments need to work together so that we can assure that that registration is happening. And if it's not, I don't know, and forgive me for not knowing, but I don't know if we've gone over the clerk's budget yet or not. Have we?
Yes.
And have we, did we include in that budget, because I know we didn't, an ordinance officer for you?
Or maybe use of or part of...
So we did not include that in there? I really think that that's where our, that is a big deficit to what you're attempting to accomplish because you have a set of rules that you're supposed to follow, but you don't have the manpower to follow it or put in place the people to follow. I will tell you this. In, I think it was 2013, HUD put out a report that said across the country, real estate, the real estate market across the country was up an average of about 3%. But there was one city in the United States where real estate prices were up almost, I'm thinking I'm going to exaggerate this, 34%, and that was Dearborn Heights, Michigan. That tells you that people that come in here and conduct business in this city come here because there is a lot of money to be made in this city. They don't come here because they're going to starve. We have an obligation to our residents, not only to know that those establishments that come in here are registered and are running legitimate businesses. And please understand that I'm not saying they're illegitimate, that aren't licensed. But we also have to make sure that those surrounding neighborhoods or those surrounding buildings are clean and free of debris and are rat-free. Those are all measures that you could put one person on to make sure that those things are happening properly. And I really think that the city, the administration, I think the ordinance department and its council has got to sit down and talk about putting a game plan together. Because just like we put a game plan together for the residents and for the community and for the homes, we need a person to address the business sector of this community. You need to bite the bullet. You need to make, we need to make the effort to put forth the money. You'll return the revenues on this. Your revenues will pay for itself.
Mayor, ordinance can write, if someone doesn't have a business license, if they're...
Yeah, what I suggest, because I'd like to get, Councilman Berry spent a lot of time, and I'd like to get a lot of that expertise that he spent in this area. But the clerk and I talked about, I have suggested that I will provide him some assistance and help in order to make this operable and workable. And it's just a matter that once, I think that probably I need to be somewhat educated in regards to the different needs that are before us in order to put this forward. I'm more than happy to give those particular resources or find them to assist. And so we talked about spreadsheet, we talked about an individual to assist in ordinance, and I'm 100% there. What I'd like, what we need to do is sit down, get your input. It's a clerk responsibility, so he will be the driver. But I've agreed to support his efforts in order to accomplish this. And so I will do that. At one time, someone we both know was doing that for the city. Remember, Mr. Alaberta was going around and...
Jerry.
Yep.
Can I, can I answer one thing here? Okay. If this honorable body remembers, I came before this body about three, four months ago and laid out a plan. And it's a matter of putting the mechanism in order. And as the mayor and I spoke today, it's, the elections are never ending. I'm already dealing with the printer today about August, so that's a problem. The other thing I just want to say in answer to Councilman Berry is we don't need to enforce it out of the clerk's office. I don't want the clerk's office to become an enforcement arm of the city. We are working fine. We are working great in conjunction with the ordinance department. This is working great. The whole answer, and you know, excuse me for being so blunt, but the whole answer is, if there are no consequences, nothing's going to happen. And as of what's going on right now, there are no consequences if people ignore those letters. There are no consequences if people go, and I don't know what happens in court. But it's as simple as that, Councilman Berry. It's, you know, you can, please come to my office if you have an opportunity. I'll go over this with you. I've got a list hanging on my wall of all these businesses, what they owe in water, what they owe in...
I'm not talking about you being an enforcer. I'm talking about an ordinance person being dedicated to that cause.
We're doing this, as I'm saying, we're doing this with the ordinance department. He's sending out the notices, the tickets or what have you. But there is no consequences after the fact. So until...
So if you have a, if you have a business that is, that his license is expired or that you find that their area is a rat trap, it's a mess outside, debris everywhere, it's, what do you do? What action do you take?
I don't police the area.
I haven't seen anything that come across here that says revoke their license.
I don't think we have that power. That's what I'm saying. We don't have the...
Go ahead, please. Yeah, you do have, I mean, it requires actually a hearing to end up being conducted before a body that basically is established by the ordinance. A more effective way to deal with this would be tickets. And like we deal with no CVOs, if someone after a while doesn't, as a matter of fact, I had a lady who showed up today from Arkansas, because basically we told her that, you know, we got an order after appropriate notice and everything else, that she wasn't going to be able to continue to have people living in the property without a CVO. So she came in today and paid $350 and is on her way to getting things taken care of. We can do the same thing with business licenses. I rarely see them. Normally, they're only in combination with other tickets. So I haven't, I haven't seen a business license ticket just plainly by itself.
Why haven't we been doing it?
Well, they may lack the resources, and I know Jack is not here. It's all manpower dedicated to that area. And that's what our biggest problem is. And John, you have something that you want to share with us as well.
Go ahead, Treasurer Riley.
First, I'd like to commend the clerk's office on the organization that's been put together because it's been very successful in many ways in collecting some past due water and tax items. But there are tickets that are going out. I had somebody come in today with a correction reminder for a business license, and then they wanted to catch up on some of their... they wanted to catch up on some of their items that they had fallen behind on, and we, you know, and we got things straightened out. And so somebody is doing it. Maybe Jack's not here to talk about it, but there are some correction reminders, or I don't know if the correction reminders are tickets, that are being submitted to people, because I saw one today. So I don't want to say that it's totally not being done, and I think because Jack's not here to speak on it. But there's been a lot of progress in this area over the last couple of years, and we have been working together.
No, I'm not accusing anyone of doing something wrong.
No, I'm not saying that either, but I'm just saying that there are correction reminders.
But you're defending him, and I, forgive me if you think that I'm attacking him.
I'm just saying, I did see a ticket or a correction reminder today. So somebody is doing it.
But he's telling me that there is a list of people who are in violation of this, and I'm asking, do we have a mechanism to follow through with the enforcement of it? The answer, Mr. Miatki's saying, is yes, we do, but we're not executing it. So where are we missing?
Right. All I'm saying is that I have seen some. That's what I stood up here to say.
That's fine. That's fine. I'm sure we have.
There are some. I'm not saying, what I'm saying is that they're not being done. Jack's not here.
We have an obligation to our residents to make sure that these businesses are operating...
I agree with you. I'm not arguing against you. I'm just saying that some of this is being done, and there's been a lot of progress.
Clerk. Mr. Chair. If I may. I think it would be more appropriate to have these discussions when Jack is here, because it sounds like there have been correction reminders, which is the first step before a ticket is going to end up being issued. And so he probably would be able to offer more information with respect to this. We have had issues sometimes in the past with people going to informal hearings and things not necessarily being ultimately addressed. And I don't know if that might be an issue. That was something that used to happen more often with a lot of these code issues, until we basically said, look, try to make sure everything is a formal hearing if we need to end up dealing with it. We've had very significant enforcement with respect to blight, no certificate of occupancy, these types of violations. A similar thing could end up being done. But again, you know, there's only so much that Jack's department can potentially end up doing, so.
Can I say one last thing, Mr. Chair?
Clerk, go ahead.
Okay, I could talk about this forever, and I won't. I promise this is the last thing I'll say. Two things. We are working great with Jack's office. There's no problem with that. Everything is going, just, so you know, but the second thing, please, you can't revoke a business license that doesn't exist.
I understand that.
And we have 100 businesses that don't have business licenses. The answer is, can you padlock their door and say, you can't operate anymore? That's the only way you're going to get them, that's the only way you're going to get them to comply, other than, I don't...
If I may, what should happen is there would be a correction reminder after he goes through this process. Then there would be a ticket that would end up being issued. Then it would end up coming over to court. If they don't come into compliance by that time, then we can end up getting an order to show cause. Then we can get an order shutting down their business until they are in compliance. But it takes various steps, but most, most people with, you know, the residential issues or even the commercial issues that don't involve business licenses usually come into compliance before we ever get to that point, because no one wants to end up having to go through all the hassle and aggravation, potentially be shut down with respect to these issues, even though there are some people, that's what you have to do. Like the woman I was just mentioning earlier today, who came in from Arkansas to end up dealing with a particular matter. Now she's going to be on her way to comply, but it takes time.
And just to finish my comment.
You said you weren't going to say anything else.
Well, I wasn't done. The counselor interrupted me. I was not done. I still had one more thing to say. And I'm done. I promise you. Zipper my mouth if I talk anymore.
I will.
I put a letter in your boxes recently, I hope you all saw them, of a business that opened up that needed council approval, and it is operating right now without a license. So...
Mr. Chair, I think the suggestion of getting together and debating this from up and down each avenue that all seven of us and the administration has, it seems to me that there's a lack of awareness on the part of the businessman that he has to come in and get a license. So there has to be somebody to initiate a, a protocol for the entire responsibilities that various department heads have, building, treasurer. If any time something shows up that is not in the record as a business, that ought to be reported to the city clerk. There has to be, there has to be a protocol established to run this information through various sources, so that we cover all the bases to assure that they will get a business license, or a, will get a notice that they need a business license.
Yeah, and get an alternate ticket.
And I think the reference of Levin A. to a, to a study session with this information, there's a relationship there that can be correlated and get these answers out. I don't know how much IT is going to help us with regard to coordinating where the communication with every department can occur through the electronic media. Look, who's talking about electronic media? The guy that didn't know how to turn the computer on when I just got started here. So I have a vision that there's a possibility that these things can be resolved, but we have to talk about it and come to a conclusion as to how to proceed.
We'll do that. We'll set a study session. We did have someone, though, when the clerk, our current clerk first started, that was going around and talking to the businesses that weren't licensed. And then it just fell off for whatever reason. Anything further?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
So we still have the motion, need a vote. It's removed and supported to renew the business licenses in 13A. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. That ends the regular portion of our meeting. Any announcements from anybody here at the table?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Exclayton.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harvey, I couldn't go first. Go ahead. I think you called it first.
Look at me and call her. I mean, I don't care. Yeah. The Spirit Fest is coming up in June, and the Parks and Recreation is having a dedicated day for our service people, servicemen and women. On Saturday, the 4th of June, at 1:00 PM at the Canfield Center, excuse me, we'll be honoring all veterans, male and female, from not only our area in Dearborn Heights, but all of our surrounding areas. So if any veteran out there is hearing this and is interested in coming, please call the Recreation Department at 791-3600 for more information, for the location, for the time, anything that you need that you don't hear right here, call the Recreation Department. We want you there. We want to honor you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lisa Exclayton.
Thank you. I have three quick announcements. The first one is on behalf of Salvation Army. I serve on the advisory council. They would like all of our Dearborn Heights residents to be aware that this Saturday, May 14th, is the postal worker food drive. This is a day that you can leave out non-perishable food items under your mailbox, and the postal worker, the letter carrier, will pick up those items and deliver it to Salvation Army of Dearborn Heights Citadel on Warren. It's important to know that that Salvation Army services Dearborn Heights, Dearborn, Redford, Livonia, and Garden City. So that again is Saturday, May 14th. So leave out some non-perishable items for your letter carrier. Other announcement, same day, May 14th, the Light Up the Night kickoff is at Daly Park, 25,000 Hopkins. The ceremony starts at 3:00 PM. This is a crime prevention and awareness that works with our Crime Prevention Bureau here in Dearborn Heights. There will be children's activities, a children tent and bounce house, as well as a free cookout. We do want to announce that we will also have the groundbreaking ceremony for the lighting project that was included in the 2015 TIFA budget. So we'll have a groundbreaking ceremony. Please join us at 3:00 PM on Saturday, May 14th, at Daly Park, 25,000 Hopkins. The last announcement I have is a thank you. We had our first annual Dearborn Heights Community Service Day this past Sunday, May the 8th. And though it was Mother's Day, we had a great turnout. We had 25 student volunteers, eight adult volunteers, and that's all on Mother's Day, come out, including Annapolis Key Club members, Annapolis National Honor Society students, OW Best National Junior Honor Society students, Riverside Middle School National Junior Honor Society students, and other students from community schools. They were able to complete nine spring cleanups in a matter of two hours. So that's not too bad. And they were able to help, there were several people who were over 90, but also we had a two-time Purple Heart recipient veteran that we were able to assist. So it was a really good day. I want to personally thank all of those students, as well as the adult volunteers, including D7 School Board member Lori FuJuda, I hope I said it right, and also the Todd family for providing the dinner following the event. So thank you, everyone. We did make a difference that day.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other announcements from anybody at the table? I see our Lions member, Don Revard, will tell us about the 32nd Annual Charity Golf Scramble that the Lions Club is having.
I don't know if I have to say anything more. You just said it all. My name is Don Revard. I live on John Daley in Dearborn Heights. I am currently the treasurer of the Dearborn Heights Lions Club. If you're familiar with the Lions Club, we are primarily dedicated to serving people with vision and hearing disabilities, as well as other ways to help out the community. We give out approximately $12,000 a year to organizations like Penricton School, the Michigan Eye Bank, Leader Dog for the Blind. Two weeks from tomorrow night, we're having our annual scholarship dinner, where we're going to award $3,000 scholarships apiece to students who are graduates Dearborn Heights residents. We give out grift cards at Christmas. We do all this thanks to the generosity of the people in Dearborn Heights. And our biggest fundraiser of the year is our charity golf scramble. That's going to be on Friday, June 24th, at Gateway Golf Course in Romulus. See, Councilman has a flyer. We are looking for golfers. We will play, it's 18 holes. There's a breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and there'll be prizes. And also, then it's $90 apiece, which is cheaper than almost any other golf outing you can find. Also, we're also looking for businesses and individuals that want to help out. We're looking for hole sponsors for $100 apiece for a hole sponsor. Everything we get, every spend we make on this, we donate back to the community. So if you have any information, if you want any further information, you can call my office at 313-565-3411. And also, you can call Richard Dick Fetscher at his business, which is 313-295-9551. But I appreciate the chance to talk. Mr. Coniston.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Mike?
Hello, Council, Chair, and Mayor. Just want to talk about a couple of upcoming events at the library. Tuesday, May 17th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM at Carolyn Candy Library, we will be talking about the Ford Motor Dynasty, Henry, Edsel, and Clara. In this presentation, Stephen Stanford will be exploring the family relationships and recount stories to help us better understand the company and the people behind it. On Wednesday, May 18th, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at Carolyn Candy Library, join us as we discuss humor and aging. Attend this fun presentation by Mildred Metlock, talking about how we, how when we are chronologically gifted, she puts it, there's plenty to laugh about. So that should be entertaining. This Saturday, May 14th, from 12:00 to 3:00 PM, we will be having a shredding day at Carolyn Candy Library. Please limit it to roughly three file boxes or bags per person to keep things moving. I also want to congratulate the friends of the library on the spring book sale. We raised over $2,800 to support programming and capital purchases for the good of the library. Thanks again to all the volunteers. Thanks to Starbucks for some coffee, and Bill Decker, once again, coming through with some assistance. Now, putting on my community service club hat, I wanted to invite the public to the Michigan Week Luncheon. Next Wednesday, May 18th, at Stitt Post on 23850 Military, from noon to 1:30 PM. The mayor will be giving a State of the City speech. I will be doing a brief presentation on the Nolan family and cemetery, and community service clubs will be honoring members of the community they feel have contributed a great deal towards making the city a better place. The proceeds will be going towards revitalizing Nolan Cemetery. Tickets are $25 before May 13th, and $30 at the door. You can contact the mayor's office for advanced tickets. Make all checks payable the city of Dearborn Heights. So come on out for an informative engagement and a great lunch. That's all for now. Thank you for your time, and see you at the library.
The date again, please.
That would be next Wednesday, May 18th.
May 18th.
Yep. Thank you.
Mike, thank you. Director Perry.
Good evening. The Dearborn Heights Police Department will be holding a memorial service for the upcoming 10th year anniversary for the death of Corporal Jason Mikowski, who lost his life in the line of duty. The memorial service will be held on Wednesday, May 25th, at the Justice Center. Details regarding the time have not been set, but more information will be coming forth to you. So May 25th.
10 years already.
10 years.
That's like yesterday. Like yesterday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Mayor, Clerk, any announcements?
The only item that, we just had the passing of Helene Sheridan, who served this community, and, you know, I think we ought to recognize her service, and I think she was a friend to most of us, so...
Absolutely. She'll be sorely missed.
Yes.
Clerk, go ahead.
Thank you. Briefly, I've taken up more than my allotment of time. For those of you who know that the election is never official till Wayne County goes over, everything certifies, the election canvases it, that was done today. So the certification was completed, so the election is now official. As I kind of stated earlier, we're already in the August primary mode. It's quite possible you may be receiving your absentee application, those of you who are in the permanent, before the next council meeting. If you do, just please bear in mind that there is a dual application, one for the August, one for the November, to save costs. So please, you can ask for both, you can ask for one or the other. But if you don't check those boxes, we're going to have to send it back and have you check the correct boxes. So just please keep that in mind, that you can ask for both August, November, you can ask for either or, and you must state a reason. Thank you very much. And any, of course, any election questions, 791-3432. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. Any further announcements? All right. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Please step up to the podium and give your name and your street address, or the street you live on.
Sue, I live on Parker, when I, in Dearborn Heights. When I was at the last city council meeting, which was 4/26, if anybody wants to YouTube it, I didn't get some answers, I'm sorry. I'm a little nervous. I didn't get some answers to some of my questions. Our neighbor poured to our lot line. I would like to know how he was able to do that without our consent.
And our ordinance director's not here today, but...
Mr. Chair, I know one of the questions from the last meeting was questions pertaining to Mr. Soap in the Building and Safety Department, and he's here today, so this is probably...
Okay, so that...
That's probably the best person that can answer those questions.
That question cannot get answered, right? Is that what you're telling me? Sue, answer it.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is the questions that you had the last time, if you recall, the Building and Safety Department director was out sick.
Okay, so is that who I direct this question to?
I mean, he'd be a good one to answer those questions.
Yeah, and so you're telling us you haven't had any answers since you were here the last time?
No.
Right, but he was not here last time to answer her, so he'd be the best person to answer that question.
Why don't we hand Mohammed the microphone? A microphone?
Behind you. Yeah.
Those two neighboring properties, that started...
Turn it on, Mohammed.
It's on. Okay, the neighboring properties, I think that issue started about five years ago.
No, it was two. It was 2000, it was 13.
One at a time, but go ahead.
Actually, 14. 14 is when he poured. 2014 is when he poured.
Sue, we can one at a time, but go ahead.
No, no, the permits were before that. And I remember one of our building inspectors was out there, they inspected it. Everything was according to the plans that were submitted. There was an issue with the downflow on one side, and I think Mr. Brooks, myself, the mayor, was there on two different occasions. Mr. Brooks recommended a lip to be installed to prevent the... to prevent the water. Both parties, okay, were kind of agreeable on it. We never heard anything about it since then.
Excuse me?
Yes.
One at a time, go ahead.
Okay. Now, the issue came up, I think another issue came up after that. It was initially for the concrete, then another issue came up for the fence. And according to the inspector, who's been with us here for 25 years doing inspections for the City of Dearborn Heights, it was done correctly. And what we saw also, there was nothing wrong.
So, but the leper, the change in the grading hasn't been done yet, correct?
Yes, it has been done.
It has been done.
Excuse, can I?
Go ahead.
Can I talk now? When we were at the first city council meeting back in 2014, actually, let me back up. When he poured, the day he poured the cement, we called the building department and said, "We had a problem with this." We called that day, okay? So, we came, nothing, we talked to the mayor, we talked to a bunch of people. We finally came to a council meeting. You told us, "There's nothing we can do right now because his, it wasn't finalized yet." His permit wasn't valid because it was to remove and replace. He did more than remove and replace. There was no cement there to begin with. He added cement, and he extended his driveway up to our property line.
Ma'am, I'm not here to argue, but...
I'm not arguing either. That is what you told us.
Exactly.
You told us that.
Well, let me finish.
And we came to the, no, it's my turn to talk now.
Okay, go ahead.
We came to a second council meeting, and you told us, again, there was nothing you can do until he came for a final inspection. So, you let it pass without even considering us, or you just lied to us? I don't understand this. We complained the first day he poured.
Can I answer now?
Yes.
No, I did not lie, ma'am, and I don't lie. As a matter of fact, that was finalized before 2014. It's on the record, and we did tell you that. And we went, made trips, the mayor, myself, Mr. Brooks, and I believe Mr. Roberts. Okay, we were out there three different times, and we found nothing wrong. The cement that was poured was according to the plans that were provided for the...
No. Remove and replace. Remove and replace. He did not remove any cement. He added. You told us the permit was not valid. You told us that. At the second city council meeting, you told us the permit wasn't valid, and he had to reapply. You said, "It takes time. Give us time." We gave you time, and you approved it.
I don't know who you were talking to, ma'am, but it was not me.
You. I talked to you.
No, I'm sorry, it was not me.
My husband talked to you.
Hold on. Mayor, what happened with the ordinance, with the warning that was issued that this woman brought the last time? Is that still outstanding, or is that taken care of?
Internally, we had discussions. The difficulty, I'm going to tell all of you, I told some of you, and I had more than one discussion with her husband. We've had numerous discussions. There is, the permit has been signed off on, and so consequently, it becomes very difficult to enforce additional action. I do believe a ticket was issued, if I'm correct, to her neighbor. And so, at this point, I think you're going to see Mr. Miyaki handling that particular ticket in court. I can't, as I indicated the last time I talked to her husband, I wasn't sure exactly how to resolve this. And a ticket's been issued, and we'll let the courts, let the judge make the decision.
A ticket for what?
Mr. Chair, wait, hold on one second.
I did not see the ticket, but I think it's regarding some of the grading toward the rear of the property.
Yep.
Has ability to get onto her property. So, again, he needs to probably do some additional grading to keep all of his drainage on his property.
And the other thing that really needs to be done, I mean, a couple of the council members have talked to their neighbor and have gotten a very negative reaction. One of the things that I'm always concerned about when you get in these neighborhood disputes, that this thing doesn't escalate to a point that it gets kind of ugly. I don't want to get real specific. I think possibly, and hopefully, the wisdom of one of the judges or the magistrate, and Mr. Miyaki, I'm asking you, I guess, to in some way, shape, or fashion, if you can resolve and see a way the parties. But unfortunately, for a while now, I've seen this going like that house on Cronin, which we've not been able to solve. Hopefully, with the court action, there might be some resolution of this. But that was the difficulty that we saw administratively when the project was signed off on.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Muske?
I just don't understand where the city falls, fails, when they say they're going to tear out and replace something, and they don't do it, and they do something else. How do we get off by signing off on something like that? Where does someone get discipline for signing off for something that should not have been signed off? That's derelict. That's pure derelict, as far as I'm concerned. Signing off on something that wasn't done, and something else was done. That's shameful to the neighbors. And I'm sorry I have to say that, but it's true. The permit said to remove and replace, and then you add, you don't remove anything, you're adding. How is that, how is that proper procedure?
If you're directing that question to me, I will answer yes. Again, just like I stated, the permit that was applied for, the drawings that were applied for, okay, the concrete was installed accordingly. Now, they're claiming that there are additional concrete in the back by the pool that's causing the drainage. That would be something else. But the ones that were final, that was on the front and the side, they were per permit.
I have the permit.
The stuff by the pool is way earlier.
Yeah, the stuff by the pool is not what we're talking about. We're talking about next to my property, next, up to my property line, that's causing water in my back door and my side vents, right here. I have pictures. Again, I will show you. Water.
Yeah, most of us have been out there and seen it.
A foot higher. How can that be approved? A foot higher, especially when we called the day it was poured.
We're not going to settle it yelling.
I'm sorry. I'm very upset.
We're not.
I'm very upset.
Unfortunately...
Our back door, water.
Mr. Chairman?
Council Miyaki?
Yeah, if I may, we're going to be going around in circles with respect to a lot of this stuff. And the fact is, is that either Mr. Roberts or I are going to be in a position where we're going to end up apparently prosecuting the neighbor. And then we'll hear from the neighbor, and not just from this person here, and we'll hear from the building department, and we'll hear from a lot of different people, and we'll actually get a lot more information as opposed to potentially one side of it. So, I think it would be more helpful. I mean, obviously, this body is this body and can do what it wants, but in terms of resolution of the issue, it was potentially going to be more helpful that it goes to court. And then, I'm not in a position where I prejudged, in my view, everything, because I'm hearing Mohammed say one thing, and I'm hearing this gentlewoman say something else, and I'm hearing potentially the neighbor saying something else as well, and Mr. Brooks saying something. So, we'll need to look at this more thoroughly at court, and hopefully be able to...
And then get some enforcement.
I have a copy of their permit right here. It says, "Remove and replace."
Understood.
Okay? So, I don't understand how, I don't know how it got approved. How did it approve? Who approved it?
Save your argument for enforcement in court. That's what I would recommend you do. And we'll meet and we'll talk after the meeting, myself, yourself, Dan Brooks, and the city attorney.
So, you cannot tell me who approved it?
Not, no one on the...
There should be somebody's signature on that.
Right.
Yeah, but we're not going to settle.
Who approved it, and what date?
We're going to be going around in circles.
What date? We called the first day it was poured. How could it be approved when we called and complained? We spoke with the mayor. We spoke with Mr. McIntyre before it was approved.
We're not going to be able to settle that right now. We understand your concern. I've been out there. I've seen it. Councilman Abdullah's been out there. I think most of us have been out there.
And Mr. Abdullah, Councilman Abdullah, he made a point last meeting when we were talking about how high it was. He filled in. He's been filling in for years, and years, and years. Our property levels were, in the backyard, were level at one time. I have pictures to show that it was level. And he just kept adding, and adding, and adding. And then when he connected the back, his pool area, to the front, because right there was all gravel, it had water to drain. When he connected the two, now it drains right into our back door and our side vent.
We've seen the pictures.
So, what's the next step?
Is we'll meet right after this meeting.
Court. Yeah, it would be court, I would think.
Yeah.
It would be court. I don't think...
Point of order.
Personally, can do anything about, but take your side in a matter if that...
Yeah, we could talk about this all night. It's...
Okay, so I'm asking, what's, okay, the next step is court. By whom? What do we do?
The next step is we're going to meet right after the meeting. But for now, I mean, for people shouting each other across the room, that's not solving anything. So, meet with myself and our city attorney right after the meeting.
Okay.
Please come up and state your name and your current address, the street you live on.
I don't know what street I live on. Jam Battlow, 5510 South Gully. So, I'm here to speak about two issues. So, I'll do the quickest issue. Councilman Barry talked about some blight, and everybody's talking about some blight. So, if you want to just please, there's several pictures you'll see. This is the house across, this is the house across the street from my house. You can see a little part of my lawn in the picture. This house has been vacant for years. Mr. McIntyre is well aware of this house. Actually, the neighbor that lives on the other side, which lives on Hanover, neighbor of mine, but he's the one that normally complains about this place because he lives right next to it. But I get to look at it every day. Every time I go get my mail, I look at this house. Now, the structure is partially unsound. The gates are falling off. There's garbage and other stuff in the yard. The back porch is unstable. It's missing an awning because a tree branch came down on it a few years ago. When I spoke with Mr. McIntyre on several occasions about it in regards to, "I would like to sell my house." What do you think the chances are of me selling my house when this is across the street from me? And I won't get into the other neighbors that I have that probably don't have a C of O yet, and they've been there since last July. But the point is that this is an eyesore. It's also a place where, you know, God knows is, what is getting into the house. I really think it should be put on the demo list, or at least somebody evaluate the structure of it, because there have been some damage to it. But I, I've, over the years, tried to work with, you know, I've kind of had enough. So...
What's the address, and has ordinance been out there?
Yeah, ordinance has been out there. And I will say that a few years back, I actually saw, and I think it was, his name was, let me get it, Chris Pop. He went out there, and he, there used to be this huge stack of tickets on the door of this house. And it was well-known that it was a vacant structure. So, I don't know really how ordinance kept going out and putting ticket after ticket after ticket, which probably if I looked through my archive photos, I have a picture of that, too. Problem is that, you know, doing that didn't do anything. Now, it used to be owned by people, because they used to live there. We thought they were coming back and going to rent it, or whatever. It was a rental property for a long time. Bottom line is, I think it's now a bank-owned property. And if that's the case, or at least we should be able to find out if it's a bank-owned property. If it's in some sort of tax foreclosure, then that's another issue. But somebody is responsible for this property.
You said you spoke with Mr. McIntyre about this, correct?
Several times.
And what did Mr. McIntyre tell you?
Well, if you saw the bushes there, okay, so they used to be 12 feet high.
Yeah, but what did Mr.?
Well, what they did initially, and I have to say, I wasn't too satisfied with it, but they called out a company, which came out and literally butchered it. But it was lower. The unfortunate part is, within that bush is an old fence, and it fell over. So...
Forgive me for interrupting you, honestly.
Go ahead.
But the issue here is, we have a property in the city that has been issued many citations, ticketed, and I'm sure that...
They were warnings. They never ticketed.
I'm sure it's in Jack's radar somewhere. I'd like to know where it's at in the court process, if it is, if it's a bank-owned property. Where is Jack in this process? I see what you have there, and it's not fun. I sympathize with you. The problem is, is Mr. McIntyre's not here, number one, to let us know where we're at in the process.
You know what? I would love to know myself, because tried to be, I haven't spoken to him this time, because truthfully, the last time we spoke in regards to this property, I mean, we have, and we all know that we have these properties that the city goes out and sends out the grass-cutting people for. We have a lot of them. We have, you know, houses that are tagged vacant, and if that status never changes, we have to assume that in the springtime, things like, you know, weeds and grass and bushes and things grow. So, it has to be on some sort of radar every year until the status of the property changes, i.e. if somebody buys it, it gets bulldozed, whatever it is. So, I'm not really sure why this home has particularly slipped through the cracks, but, you know, I can't do...
Well, we don't know if it's through the cracks, or if it's in the process of being demoed or sold.
Well, the last time we spoke, I was not given any information in regards to a change in status of the property.
Who did you speak with?
With Jack.
Is the address, is the address on Hanover?
Yes, it is. Sorry, I haven't memorized it. No, and I didn't write it down. But I can email to you, whatever. But the point is that this is a reoccurring house. It's been vacant for more than three years. So, you know. But anyway, so that was just that little tidbit. But what I came here for was Item 8B from the meeting of 426, in regards to the 911 dispatch letter of intent. I did download the information and read it all over, and these are my comments. So, I will preface it by saying I don't support this, but I do have multiple reasons, so I hope you'll consider them. Way long ago, and I'm sure some of you realize that we did talk about providing, our city providing dispatch services to other communities, because we do have, well, at least when it was built, it was a state-of-the-art facility. It has an emergency operations center and a dispatch center. So, when I look at this proposal, I see that it's supposed to provide a cost savings of $243,000 annually. However, when I look at, in this community, I think it's approximately $26 million of our approximately $42 million budget is spent on the police and fire department, which does include dispatch. So, for me initially, it's not exciting me. If it was like $2 million something, it might, you know. So, this proposal, you know, definitely from what I read, takes away control from our police and fire department on how our services, you know, are performed, because our dispatch is an integral part. I mean, that's your first line of defense. If they get it wrong, unfamiliar with the area, unfamiliar with our equipment, unfamiliar with our policies, et cetera, et cetera, then we could, you know, get into some trouble. Now, it was interesting, because I remembered that our residents in this community are definitely more than satisfied with our fire and police department response. And this was definitely evidenced by the overwhelming support for the headley override in 2013, which generates about $1.8 million-ish for the city on an annual basis. And at the time that the city was requesting the headley override, city assured the residents that if this was passed, that emergency services in our community would remain at the same high level that it is. Now, this proposal, and there are several places, but on page two of the slideshow part of it, the proposal assumes that all seven communities are going to participate. However, when this was presented to you, the letter of intent was only approved by Melvindale, and it's my understanding that basically Dearborn's providing a lot of their services already. So, none of the other communities have even signed on. I don't have an update on that since. So, when you're talking about money-wise, the savings and whatever, everything in here assumes all seven participate. assumes all seven participating in order to meet those dollar goals. Now, important issues, at least to me, like staffing levels, equipment purchases, technology updates, will all become solely at the discretion of the city of Dearborn. And they do have a part in here where it says that this is not a joint venture, a joint authority. And they several times say that any and all policies, et cetera, et cetera, will definitely be them setting it. Of course, they do say that we might be included along with the other communities, but who knows how that's going to be, because all the communities have different policies. So I find that's going to be extremely difficult to work out. It kind of reminds me of the IT contract from Dearborn, because from what I remember of that, and which I didn't support, there was a lot of details that really weren't presented. And for me, you know, staffing issues, equipment purchases, how you're going to go about resolving disputes, protocol, whatever it is, you know, obviously, this is something initial, but to me, that's really important. And then lastly, most of the residents that, you know, I've spoken to, because they do still amble over to my house or call, and, you know, I do, am connected on social media, they're definitely talking about this issue, and most people, I would say probably 90%, do not support this proposal. They are very pleased with their current service level, they don't feel that it's a necessity to change it, and certainly when they're, you know, told the cost savings on an annual basis compared to our overall budget, they really feel it's a drop in the bucket, as do I, and not worth it. We would rather keep that, and you modify something else in the budget if necessary. So, that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Question.
Councilman Horvath.
I have a question. I don't know if I heard this right.
Sure.
Early on, did you say that a lot of people aren't dissatisfied with our police and fire department?
Oh, no, just the opposite. They're extremely satisfied.
And they don't want it to change.
They do not want it to change. And this is from a variety of different age groups and areas in the city, so.
Mr. Chair. You know, going back to what you said about that blighted home, I remember many times myself asking, why don't we hold the banks and whoever owns these homes responsible? They get foreclosed, the bank takes them, and they turn into garbage. Look at the homes on Ford Road and John Daly. Those homes are sold, they're empty. Once beautiful homes. Go look at the mess that you have there. When are we going to hold the people who own them responsible to keep up that property before they knock them down and build whatever they want to build?
But the banks are responsible, I mean, if there's.
Well, what are we, we're not doing nothing for, the grass is already two feet tall on these homes.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
There's a, there's a new thing that they've gone to with banks, and most of the banks have pretty much just started to move into this in the last few months. We're now foreclosure property, instead of the bank taking it back and then just selling it as-is and letting you, the investor, deal with it. Now that they're taking these properties back, they're fixing them up, nothing fancy, paint, carpet, landscaping, simple, and putting them back on the markets, because the bank, and they're not doing it for our sake as a city.
Why?
They're doing it because they've realized that instead of selling a $100,000 property for $30,000 or $40,000, they could put, they typically put $10,000 to $15,000 into it, no more. But they're selling it for 80 or 90 and thus earning a profit. But as far as the city's concerned, it ends up working in our favor, because now these houses are going to be much nicer only because they gained to profit from this. And most of the banks have gone to that. As far as the properties on Ford Road that you're pertaining to, I do have relatively firsthand knowledge that they're, they're all in the process of about to be torn down for businesses to go up.
That's fine, fine being in the process, but we got people, citizens, who are getting tickets for high grass, and they're skating. And I'm totally against that. Up to the point, today start construction, that property should be kept pristine. I'm sorry. That's our ordinance. Either we have the ordinance and we enforce the ordinance, or just make it go away. Make the grass ordinance go away for everybody then, because we're cutting corners. And that's what I've always, always spoken about, how bad everything looks, and we let them get away with it. We don't, we don't go out there and challenge. I'll tell you what, if they build a building there and I rent a building from them, I miss one red payment, you see how fast they'll kick me out of there. No different if a bank owns a home and doesn't keep it up. Miss a payment on your credit card to a bank and see what happens. And that's the way we should handle this stuff, too. We've been pussyfooting around for too many years. And I just, my blood boils when I see tall grass all over the city. And I know, I know for a fact that our ordinance department is, is, is working very hard and diligently, but we've let it go for years. Well before Jack came here, he inherited a mess, and we allowed it as a city to allow it to happen. Now everybody thinks they can just go ahead and skate. And that's what I'm irritated about. And this goes on every year. Every April comes around, you see this dandelion sticking up four, three, four feet high on people's lawns. They can have the dandelions, keep them cut. Keep them out of my lawn, that's what I say.
Mr. Chairman.
Where do you?
I don't, I don't want to comment on everything, but I do want to comment on one thing. I think I can say Garden City has agreed to go into the dispatch. Westland is about ready, and Westland currently does a joint dispatch with some of the communities in Western Wayne. The real, and, and we're going to present everything, and all of us will look at it. The only thing we've done at this point is earmark with Dearborn that we want to consider going into this group. Our equipment in very near future will be obsolete, and we have to look if we're going to continue dispatching and putting in a few million dollars to keep it upgraded. Money that I don't know that we're going to be able to afford. The other thing is dispatch, joint dispatch is done in the down rivers, in many other areas, it works very successfully. There's no reason to believe it cannot work successfully, and I think scaring the residents is the wrong way to look. Let's look at, we're going to have the people come in, we'll all have our opportunity of addressing and discussing it, and I have complete confidence that all eight of us will make the right decision.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman. During that study session, will that be open for the, to the residents?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, study session. Just wanted to make sure. Hey, Ms. Todd, your, your street and your.
Ms. Todd, Academy Street. A question and then a statement. I'd like to direct it to our city clerk, Mr. Wally. I was going to call you, Wally. I'm trying.
Clerk Precich.
People have asked me, I can't pronounce his last name.
Precich.
People have asked me, why do we have all these separate elections? Why can't we kind of combine some of these elections? You know, like, we had the primary, then we had for the sinking fund, and then now we're going to have for August and November. In fact, my petition asked me that, too. So I was just wondering, is there a law that says certain things have to be done separately?
We voted on, and we talked about, when I was a state rep in Lansing, consolidating elections, there was groups in favor of it, there were a lot of groups against it. One of the issues is this increased turnout. Some people are against that, but that's, there's several bills pending that's talked about, but go ahead, clerk.
Oh, you want me to answer? The presidential primary is scheduled by the legislature. The school has the option of, the school has the options of calling elections in May. It's their prerogative. Should they do so, it's not, they're separate and distinct from the city, so when they do so, I wasn't even notified in one election until the last filing date. We're charged with administering the election. The school districts have to pay for that.
Okay, so they could put it in with another election, but they chose.
They chose. It's a school district's choice.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you. Okay. During the last council meeting, the majority of council members voted to send a letter of intent to the city of Dearborn to indicate that Dearborn Heights was interested in the city of Dearborn taking over our emergency dispatching. Looking back to 2011, the residents voted to override the headley amendment, which meant increasing our taxes in order to keep our emergency services intact. Three years ago, in 2013, the residents of Dearborn Heights paid approximately $750,000 to update our emergency dispatch services. However, now in less than a few years, the mayor and some of the members of the city council want to farm out our emergency dispatching services to Dearborn. I haven't, I wasn't able to check this out, but I also heard we would sell our emergency dispatch equipment for the amount of around $180,000. Again, I'm not sure if that number is correct. However, once we have sold our dispatch equipment, that's it. We can't go back, and we would now be at the mercy of whatever Dearborn wanted to charge us in the future. This is supposed to save us money. What is also troublesome is the fact that before the council voted to even send the letter of intent, our dispatchers were not allowed to have a say before the vote was taken, even after councilperson Horvath indicated an interest in hearing from them. We need to hear not only from our emergency dispatchers, but also from our rank-and-file police and fire officers, as they too will be greatly affected by this takeover. All this needs to be made public and videotaped, so all residents of Dearborn Heights have access to it. Since we will be having a general election this coming November, this could be added to the ballot with little cost or work. Did I say that right? Would there be a lot of work if something was added? Okay. All the council has to do is put forth a resolution, vote and pass it, so it can be put on the ballot. Since we have several months until election day, this should not be a problem. However, let's forget about the money issue and look at the safety issue. The thought of another city dispatching emergency services for myself or a loved one has me envisioning deadly and dangerous scenarios that could become reality if this takeover should ever happen. One of the things that defines a city's greatness.
Bless you.
Bless you. Is the quality of their emergency services. Funny how for 45 minutes, the mayor and our ordinance director talked against having an outside pest control company come in here for just a few months to help with the rat problem, yet the mayor is promoting another city to take over our emergency dispatch services, the very lifeblood of this city. No amount of money would ever begin to equal just one life loss because of this very bad idea of letting another city take over our emergency dispatching. Our mayor already has the city in the business of owning a combined sewer overflow facility, and now wants us to be partners with other cities in buying a sewage treatment plant. What gives here? I have an idea. Why don't we do the emergency dispatching for Dearborn? And just one, one other comment. I would like to say thank you to councilperson Hicks Clayton for organizing and running our first community service day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Move to adjourn.
To port. Support. Meeting adjourned, thank you.